As well as our two propositions and congratulations to the two candidates. So we're going to move on. We have one little section of the UPK section, real quick discussion, and we're going to, Ms. Kent is going to talk to us.
So I just give the board a back on some updated figures for UPK. Last year, we were given $669,000 and change from the state and we ran, as you know, the four sections. The way in which the grant works from the state is that you can only take money for the amount of students you serve up to that number. So we only took, if you remember from the update from January, we only took about $500,000 and change because we had 72 students. This year, we were planning, so if you look at the first page that you get, it says current UPK plan. This is what we were planning on doing prior to the release of new state aid. So based on the $669,000, when we discussed for next year, we talked about six sections of UPK and we talked about one of the six sections being paid for completely out of general fund for the general fund contribution being about approximately $190,000 as a projected amount. We have enrolled all of the students into the current UPK. We have 108 students enrolled and we have 50 students still sitting on the waiting list. So if you flip to the next page where it says updated UPK plan. Fortunately, the state gave us an increase in aid for the grant in UPK. So we're now getting $1 million, $6,799 for UPK. So we had an increase of $337,174. Remember, 10% of that fund does need to go to Cross for Christ because they're our partners. So $100,000 of that total would go to them. If this thing keeps the per student rate that they had for us last year, which was $7,049, and we had the succession, six sections of 108 students, we can now get $761,000 we can apply for out of the grant. As a result of that, our projected cost for the six sections was $792,873 and our contribution is $761,000. So now, we only are going to take out $31,581 out of the general fund. So the difference then from what we originally budgeted to now is $158,602. So that's great news that we got that extra. It's saving us $158,000. However, with the million dollar increase, there's actual room in the grant if we wanted to open a seventh section. So the next page shows you what a seventh section of UPK would cost us, what it would look like. If, again, we have $1 million, remember that we have to give that 10% to Cross for Christ. If we had seven sections, it's 126 students because it's 18 students per section. The approximate cost that we had talked about in January of opening a section that's including the teacher, the para and the cafeteria aid, with the cost of supplies coming out of other grant monies, is $121,303. So the projected total cost, if we were to have seven sections of UPK, would be $914,176. However, we can get more grant funds. Again, if the state keeps us at the $7,049 and we multiply that by 126 students, we now will be able to get $888,174 from the state. We still actually wouldn't be using all of our funding. So when you do the original math, it will cost the general fund $26,000 to open a seventh section. So where we originally projected $190,000, if we keep with our current plan, it actually is, if you look, it's actually 26. At $31,000, if we keep with our original plan, if we open a seventh section, it's actually only going to cost us $26,000 total to open that seventh section. So I wanted to bring this to you tonight because, A, we got this extra money and we did make the commitment if we had extra money, we could discuss what we wanted to do. So I wanted to bring to you a plan of what we can do if you want to increase the UPK by one section. Ms. Clark and I already discussed that she has the space for the seventh section, the supplies, again, for the sections coming out of other monies, the stimulus grant, Title I grants, and all of the salaries except for the $26,000 is coming from grant funds. It's not general funds. Now, of course, again, this is projected, right? So there could be where somebody takes a different plan, has a different salary line that we do. So if there is some variation in there, the state can come and say, well, instead of $7,049 a student, you can have $8,000 a student, or they can say even a little bit less per student. But so this, based on the information we have now, is the projected cost to do that.
So we were talking about this in, in the past too, when we talked about the specials, right? And we were at an area where we thought we were a little close and we're pulling hours. So you worked that out too as well?
Well, if you remember, the UPK does not have the same mandate for specials as K through five. So we would be stretching our specials a little bit more. Library would be fine, art would be fine, music, a little type.
We could see some of the savings that we're projecting actually also if we needed to add a .2 or a .4 if we were short, given that we were intending on spending $190. And now, if you added a seventh section and you had 26, there is money in the budget to add a .2 or a .4 of art or music to supply UPK a period a week.
Right, this would still be under that $190,000 that we originally said we were going to take in general fund.
Anyone have any questions?
Sounds very good.
Did we proceed this before tonight?
No.
Okay. I know personally, I like to just kind of sit down and digest the numbers.
Absolutely.
Obviously, not this meeting, but I will be requesting to just go back and have a discussion with class sizes and when that determination was made last May and just kind of figure that out first before we move forward.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just wanted to just clarify that, again, that this money that we used last year for the most part, except for that extra money, that little extra we needed, was grant funded. That could only be spent on UPK. So regardless of what we did K through five, we would not have been able to access that funding for the program except for UPK. So I just want to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Some people had asked me that tonight.
I guess the question, the concern is the FTEs, the teachers, that are being used there. I just want to, and if I can digest for a little bit, and then just the information from the last meeting, to see where those teachers went, grade sizes being, like I said, raised to 27. I'm still trying to find that discussion and we can have a robust conversation about this the next meeting.
And that's why I wanted to present it to you now.
Thank you.
We had time to think about it. And like I said, we have 50 people on the waiting list and so I wanted to make sure that, you know, we had time to think about it.
What kind of working deadline are you, what would be your working timeline that works best for you?
I would like to, at the next business meeting, if we can have a discussion and maybe at that point be able to make a decision would be great. Just because I know many of those parents are, you know, have spots in other schools and it's costing them money just to be able to give them time. We would still be ahead of last year's timeline, but I think that would just be, you know. So if there's any questions that you need in the meantime for me to research, you know, you can ask around with that.
Yeah, so guys, does that work? You have any, you know, you want to look at this? You have any questions? Send us some emails and we'll get that over to Kim. Are you thinking before that, that's saved out of general fund, we could use that, or any, right? Do you want the, are you getting that back? You have the FTE, right? Right, so 130, right? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, so we're onto, this is section, public participation. I want to raise a question, a brief statement about agenda items this time. Again, remember, we have time later on at the end for non-agenda items. So if you see what you want to talk about that's on the agenda, this is the time to do that. We just recognize that, again, stand up, recognize where we come from, and we have a five-minute limit on that.
Is it possible for us to discuss the elementary start times before that? Because that is on the agenda, but unfortunately, it's, that's toward the ends.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we can do that. Does anyone have any questions on agenda items? Okay. Yeah, let's just get to that portion.
Was there security guards or, I mean, I know you have the, sorry. The agenda I saw earlier was not this one. And then, of course, I didn't go through this one before. I'm just wondering if, I know we hired and moved to security guards. Were we setting on hiring anymore or is it satisfying the needs of the schools?
I would have to check that. I don't know if I know that off the top of my head. And I, I think what you're referring to is probably the backup that went along with the personnel items. I'd have to, I don't know, Barbara Rips, you would know if this, any hiring of security guards tonight, does that make us full in our hiring or are we still looking to fill positions?
I believe we still have open positions. I can access the HR agenda, but it tells you in the agenda what the position is for, the security position. If it's a leave or it's a new position.
So if you want to request.
There's positions open on the, I can't think that the.
On the, on opportunities.
They're open on the website, okay.
Yeah.
So they're, but they're still here and so they're there. So we're, we basically, I've had availability in all areas, except. So I suspect that there's still openings.
Okay.
So the hiring of security guards becomes like a 12-month endeavor because we will keep hiring as many people as there are out there because then they can sub, they're not full-time positions. Like, for example, tonight, you know, some security guards have been on since 5:00 AM and are still here because of our meeting. So we would have people on hand to be able to swap out. So we will always be looking. It's very similar to filling paras, sub-paras. We always are hiring substitute teachers. So it's always an ongoing process.
Okay. And with that, I know, and it's not a cast later. I know that after the, we had a few more meetings ago where there was a lot of tax that was set about by the school and there was a procedure put in place to have more teachers in the hallway and security. Has there been any update as to how that is working? Are the teachers and the staff still in the positions that it's supposed to be? Is it determined stuff? Is it?
So, which is, that's not an agenda item. We're going to have to pause on that one.
No, no, I can.
We're going to get to it quickly. We're going to try and buzz right through this, I promise. Anyone else question?
Yeah, I have to. Okay, Evelyn, I'll second your answer. Okay, the UPK that we just presented, if you go with the six or the seven sections, it's either 26 or $31,000 coming out of the general fund. Okay, the teachers that teach UPK have absolutely nothing to do with the increase in class size that you guys, that you guys up there decided on last year, the 27, correct?
Correct. We're still waiting to see that meeting. There was, there was a discussion. There wasn't a discussion amongst board members, from what I saw, on the meeting that was referenced, that we had a discussion. So we're still waiting on some of that information.
The meeting from.
There were several meetings in May that were referenced and were.
When you talked about last year not knowing how many kids were coming back, coming off COVID and everything.
Well, I think the discussion last year was that we were planning on reopening as if everyone who was previously on remote, the planning was to move forward in person and no option for remote. Obviously, if a parent wanted to homeschool their child, then, you know. But Glenn, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that was, that was the plan, a full opening in person.
I think the conversation that Evelyn is referencing is on the YouTube video of that meeting where there was discussion about 25 and 27 and not knowing who would be coming back and class sectioning not being fully determined at that point. But the discussion was 25, 27, when I reviewed that video from last May. It was a question that Evelyn basically. Evelyn asked. Right, Evelyn asked the question. She said to you, well, the class size is changing or returning to pre-pandemic status, which pre-pandemic status, we were at 26. So you may have said 27, but again, it was a dialogue between you and Evelyn. It wasn't really a board dialogue and that's what I was saying. So we're still.
Okay, no, I was just wondering, okay, and again, those teachers who were being accessed and got jobs in UPK would not have been able to reduce class size in elementary school this year because this money was only used for UPK.
That's right.
Because there is a little confusion out there.
But if we stayed, but if, again, if we stayed at 26, we wouldn't, we would have had more positions available in those grades. So the UPK money had.
If you stayed at 26, it didn't fit into your budget.
But it was never a discussion.
No, it did fit into our budget. It didn't fit into the budget when we were adding the UPK classes.
No, the UPK, the UPK classes have nothing to do with the general fund because it's a grant money. That, it's two completely separate things.
No, Evelyn, the, the teachers, the.
You're correct. She's correct. They were two separate things.
Right.
But however, if the class size did not get an adjustment to 27, we would have needed X amount of more teachers that year, just as.
No, absolutely.
Just as, just as when we returned this year and we needed to, we needed an extra teacher for kindergarten, we needed to add a teacher this year.
Absolutely.
Right.
But when you did the budget, this is how many sections you budgeted for.
Okay, again, the question was asked by you, are we returning back to?
So, okay, I didn't even know that.
You can watch it. Are we returning back to pre-pandemic? And again, our assumption was, because we've always had 26 as that number, again, the number.
No, I understand that. And we haven't always had 26. I know you guys like 26 and I like 26. I like 20. What makes 26 the magic number?
It's, for me, it's not a magic number. It was just a number that we went on forever. As Glenn has mentioned, the board policy is, again, a little bit higher, right? So, so again, with that being said, as a, as a, as a board and in agreement with administration, we all know where we want to be and how we have done that along the years. And again, there's a couple of factors, the pandemic, the return back to in-person, whether we were going to, again, planning at that time, we didn't know where we were going to be. We were, again, like Glenn said, we were planning everything as if we were returning to normal. So when we hear that, and then, again, you asked that question.
But see, this is where my confusion is.
Yeah.
If you were planning on doing everything, going back to pre-pandemic.
Correct.
You did not allow in the budget for additional positions. You knew how many kids you had.
We didn't, we didn't notice that again. We, it's, again, it was presented and then the UPK presentation was going on the same thing. And there was multiple times that the question was asked. And again, is it affecting it? The answer is no, because one has nothing to do with each other, right? But some of those teachers did come back.
No, no, and it's not, it's not the actual teacher. It's positions.
No, it's not, absolutely.
And you budgeted for so many sections in elementary school and it's a budgetary thing. It is. You, you have this many children, you need this amount of teachers. You have to do a budget based on those sections.
Right.
So I'm a little confused though.
Because the budget was done based on 27, right? That's, that's a true statement.
I'm asking.
That's a true statement.
Okay.
But again, there was no discussion amongst the board members to say to administration whether, again, board policy, superintendent could have went to, what was it? 30, right? 25 in kindergarten, 30 grades, one and two, and 32, three through five. Right, so let's just say he presented to us, you know, going to 30 or 32. We would have obviously had a discussion of, of issues.
So moving forward, you presented a budget that the community just voted on and now you're having discussion about class size for next year. And as a taxpayer, it's backwards to me.
But we're just having a discussion about what happened. We're not trying to change anything. We're not saying that. We just, again, we have to know. We, same thing, we don't want it to go to 30 without having a conversation or a presentation.
No, I understand that, but no, you've been talking about adding sections to alleviate the 27, which is a budgetary thing. And you presented a budget to the community that they just voted on.
So we also spoke about in that meeting, right? Glenn was specific to the fact that we were voting, we were voting on a number, right?
We're voting on the, on the tax rate. I absolutely understand that. But coming to all of these meetings and listening to what you're presenting and then after, after the budget is set, this changes. As a taxpayer, I have real concerns with that.
And we tried to have discussions throughout the process and we had asked many questions throughout the process. And up until the last meeting, when it was our opportunity to, again, continue to discuss that, we did have some questions. But we have a timeframe that we have to move forward and pick that number and we were at that date already. And that was what the issue was and that's what the superintendent explained to everybody about, you know. There are some concerns from, again, a few board members. It didn't have to be in general consensus yet. We didn't have to vote on it.
Oh, no, I understand that.
And as I said, I appreciate you and thank you for that. But understand, we are trying to have conversations about it. And it's, again, it's about moving forward in the future, right? We don't want to get to 30. We really don't want that to happen.
They may have done that. Absolutely, we don't. I just think these discussions need to be done earlier before the budget is already set in stone.
Thank you.
Because to hear we're taking money out of reserves for this now is upsetting.
Well, we haven't made a.
No, 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 you haven't decided, but that's what you were talking about and that was upsetting.
We did discuss that, but I will also say, Evelyn, as far as, once the budget is adopted and the number is there, right? The presentations are the recommendations of how to allocate the amount of money that the administration is recommending to the board. The board then adopts a budget number. But we have the ability to move funds around, to realign them, should the board request to do that in consensus with administration. So the community isn't voting on a class size of 27 or a class size of 26. But the board can look at the bottom line and say to me, can you please work with your cabinet? We'd like you to find three sections worth of money, and I'm making this up, $300,000. We don't want to dilute any programs. We don't want to reduce this. Can you come up with a recommendation? And what we could do is provide the board some examples of how we may be able to shift money. To be honest, the amount of shifting of money, and the board president would know this because they vote on it, anything over $5,000 of transfers has to be voted on by the board. And this year, for example, our LIPA bill more than almost, probably almost tripled. So the board has been moving hundreds of thousands of dollars to PSE and G bills from other codes that the community didn't vote on that LIPA bill being that amount of money. So really, what it comes down to is, now that the board has adopted a budget, and this was the conversation, we needed to adopt the bottom line that the community would vote on, add a tax cap, below a tax cap, whatever the board wanted to do. We have the ability as a leadership executive team to now discuss if the board's interested in looking at a particular grade, a particular section, because those things don't have to be implemented pervasively. You don't have to say 26 across the district. You could say, hey, we want to do X, Y, and Z. We want to find this many sections. Glenn, work with your cabinet, come back to us with a plan. So that is where the board left it, that they agree that that's the amount of money that the district is going to expend. And if it needs to be adjusted when we move forward, we will have those discussions. It's not about trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes or to not be transparent to the community because we don't vote on the number of teachers. We vote on the bottom line of the number.
I understand all of that.
And you are absolutely right about the difference between UPK. They don't affect each other at all. But it doesn't preclude the board from having a discussion about asking us to explore options if they wanted to moving forward. Just like, you know, it came in late, you know, Frank gave us, you know, more numbers and more money came and there was a savings and we had a discussion with the, we put it back in the reserves, we add to it. Now, we got a new thing. We got $164,000. So if that's going to save from the general fund and that's $164,000, possibly a couple of teachers. We don't, we don't know, so.
No, I understand that. And make no mistake, I think small sizes is so important. I just think kids do better in small sizes. I think in this day and age where so many kids missed a year, a year and a half, I think small sizes are so important. But I'm also a taxpayer and I see both sides of it. I just, my, my concern as a taxpayer is for the last two or three years, before the vote, after the budget was, was decided on, the bottom line was set, it was stated that, well, we can always change that. And you can. That's your right. But, but as somebody who goes to these meetings and listens to where you want to allocate the money, I have a concern that year for year, that is said.
Thank you.
And Evelyn, if I could, if I could just speak. The changing of the 27 to the 26, I did not realize last year. I had no idea. In my opinion, there was no discussion. It was just presented. And I have to be honest with you, as a volunteer, there's, you know, things that I don't always catch.
I don't even remember asking the question. I get it.
Yeah, you actually did. And, you know, it, it didn't stay the same. And I wish there would have been a conversation that they were going to change it because we could have had a robust conversation about, are we going to change what we have now? Well, it was changed. The board didn't have a discussion and here we are now. And at no point am I saying to delve into, you know, the budget we have now or go into reserves to add back where we were. The only thing I was saying is, again, there was a change. The board didn't know.
Were you at the executive session that?
Excuse me?
Were you at exec session that meeting?
I don't think I've ever missed an exec session, but I doubt we would discuss.
We did.
Class size. So if you leave.
And staffing. We did.
Okay.
And we can't discuss executive session here, but there was a conversation. I don't think you were there because we actually did some other business as well.
Okay, well, we could, we certainly could look into.
Well, I just want to be transparent. You're saying we never discussed it. I gave you information that was requested. That shows there was a discussion.
I saw some handwriting stuff, but again, we, we could just.
You saw my notes from the meeting.
Notes where it wasn't on the agenda.
Notes from the meeting. Well, we're talking about executive session. We shouldn't be. We can discuss that in the executive.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Why is there a big executive session?
Exactly.
Personnel. It was related to accessing the number of teachers, the number of teachers in staffing. That's personnel related. Because it's people.
Wait, 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 it's not specifics.
Yes, it was specific people.
No, it was.
I know, I just, I didn't realize.
All right, never mind.
If you're talking sections like that, I didn't realize that was executive session.
No, we have it's not. No, sections is not. Specific people in accessing is.
And perhaps we could just put this on hold and discuss this at the next meeting. Because I have different dates of when things were discussed, but again, it's not a conversation for right now.
Okay, any other questions?
I do have one line.
Go ahead.
I know that the cap was at 26 for this year. Is that correct?
No.
For this current school year, is that 27?
No, it was 27.
We have sections that are currently over 27 and I understand it's at, and we didn't leave the superintendent's discretion. Does the board get that information if there are sections that do go over that cap?
We get information on, on students that are in sections, but we don't have any above the cap that we know of unless, yeah. So as far as we are aware now.
Are there no sections at 28?
From, from 1 through 5?
Yeah, well, there may be some classes that students with special needs would push into, but there are no, in my knowledge at this point, as looking at staffing, I have not seen any classes that are set, grades 1 through 5 at 28.
And next year, they'll be capped at 27 currently?
27, yes, that's what.
Right now, it was capped at 27.
Okay.
Is this the right time to discuss this diagram star for next year or are we waiting?
No, we'll talk about that a little later. Okay, so we're moving on to policy. Recommend the board approve the following policies for first reading. There's none at this time. Second reading, an adoption. It is release of statements by district and media relations, which is NV317. And social media, NV6155. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion Heather, second.
Second.
Second. Mr. Shide, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Personnel actions. I need a motion. Resignations, terminations, leaves of absence. Superintendent School recommends board approved resignations, terminations, leave of absences in accordance with applicable provision of education law and civil service law. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion is Bob, second. Second?
Second.
Second Heather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Appointments, tenures and salary change. Superintendent School recommends the Board of Education approve the employment status, tenure, appointments and salary changes in accordance with applicable provision of education law. Civil service law is cited in Schedules 2 and Schedule 2A. Civil service law is cited in schedules two and schedule two A. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion Bob, second.
Second.
Second. Keisha, all in favor?
I have a question on this.
You got a question?
On this, uh, my daughter is a substitute teacher here and she's being appointed as a permanent sub on this one, so I just think let people know that.
Thank you, Dan. Um, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, so now we go to omnibus, which is A through, is that L? Okay. Uh, motion?
Motion.
Motion. Sorry, it's aye. Oh, it is an aye?
It's an aye.
I wasn't sure. Yeah, it's an aye. Okay, it's aye, guys. Uh, motion?
Motion.
Motion. Dan, second. Heather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, guys, so I need a motion to table memorandum of agreement between IBT Local 237 and North Babylon.
Motion.
Motion. Uh, Bob, second.
Second.
Second is Heather. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now I need a motion to add, uh, item 14. Motion?
Motion.
Motion Dan, second?
Second.
Second Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Just going to read what item 14 is because you don't have it out there. It's resolved on recommendation of superintendent schools. The Board of Education hereby approves a memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education, North Babylon Teachers Organization, North Babylon's administrators, as well as, uh, an employee discussed in the executive session. Okay? So that was what that, what motion is. We just carried on. Um, now we have a roll call vote on a superintendent hearing appeal. Um, so this is whereas the Board of Education has reviewed a record of a disciplining action proceeding pursuant to education law 3215 concerning student, we spoke about in, uh, executive session. Whereas the Board of Education has duly deliberated concerning the record of said proceeding and consider the arguments raised by a parent of student A in executive session. Now therefore it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby denies the appeal of the parent of student A in its entirety and affirms the decision of our superintendent of schools and further directs that the district clerk notify the parents and the students of this determination. This is a roll call vote. I need a motion first.
Motion.
Motion is Mr. Caraleo, second.
Second.
Second is Keisha. District clerk.
Okay. Mrs. Callahan-Caraleo? Mrs. Ma, Mr. Myers? Mr. Lucetti?
Yes.
Mr. Caraleo?
Yes.
Mr. Shide?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivers?
Yes.
Mrs. Rowland?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Do you have a roll call on this one?
Do you have the roll call? I don't think it was.
Okay, sorry. All right, so we just need a motion on, um, yeah, added. Okay, right. So now I need a motion on item 14, correct. The first motion was just to add it to the agenda. The second one is now we need to vote on item, uh, 14, which is what I read out before. Motion, Mr. Caraleo, second. Uh, Bob, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you for that. Uh, now we got some reports from some subcommittees. Does the auditor have one?
Uh, we're having the meeting, uh, May 20, virtual meeting. The order.
Perfect. Uh, building inspection. I know there's some good news to talk about on that one, right? So, uh, yes, we are going to have a, you can, no, you've been waiting for it. Go ahead, don't worry. Uh, we're going to be opening up our theater at North Babylon High School tomorrow with the high school concert, uh, and a dedication, um, of the Lee County Theater at North Babylon High School tomorrow night. So very exciting. We're doing it at seven. So we're going to do that right at seven, right before the concert. If anyone wants to come down and join us, we're going to do a ribbon cutting ceremony. So we're all pretty excited about that. Um, policy, have anything kind of being set up coming?
It was partially mentioned as far as for the release statement of the district and the media, as well as the social media as well, just to review those policies and to move forward with the first and second readings.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you. Um, communications committee? We haven't had a meeting since, right?
Yeah, unfortunately.
We got to get one.
We have lots of concerts.
So let's get that one on the, uh, next month, all right? All right, so now's the time. We're going to discuss our elementary start times. Again, thank you everyone who I know waited for this topic, um, and, um, thanks for sticking around. But, um, we're going to have a board discussion topic, so Glen, you want to start it? Yeah, so, um, I gave you guys a sheet tonight that, um, I worked on with, that I worked on with the elementary principals to provide the board two options regarding the staggered start. The first one is, um, similar, although some of the times have changed. Um, regarding MGV Woods in Belmont, um, being an earlier school with UPK being six hours from May 30 to 2:30. And Parliament in DeLuca, student time 9:15 to 3:35, um, start for the option one. Then in brainstorming with the elementary principals, we came up with the alternative where Parliament in DeLuca could be early at 8:45 start and Better Woods in Belmont could be a 9:15 start with UPK being 9 to 2:30. But, um, in this scenario, UPK is five and a half hours at that time. I know you had mentioned to me asking about why the five and a half hours. I couldn't remember the discussion, Ms. Lark. So could you just tell us why that fits in the way it does that way and it's a half hour less than the other scenario?
He's at 11 o'clock at night. I don't know if I remember. Um, yes, uh, it, I would say that we talked about the fact that it had to do with the dismissal conflict. There was no way for it to be six hours and not conflict with the dismissal at the late time because.
So the three o'clock dismissal of UPK would interfere with.
With the early schools dismissals, yes.
The early schools getting out at 3:05. So if you have a kid in both buildings, so the, the kids get out at 2:30. If you made that to three, it would align to the regular dismissal of these schools. So Parliament in DeLuca would have the same dismissal time as UPK, so the parents couldn't be in two places. Right. So here it allows them to pick up their UPK kid at 2:30 and get home to a bus or get on a line to get their, their child out of the, of the two schools. Thank you for the reminder of that. I now recall the conversation.
Actually makes sense.
Yes.
So you guys might have a little talk about. So the, the program currently is five and a half hours, so we were recommending an increase to six hours. Um, so I'll, I'll try to explain it again. So with UPK getting out at 2:30 at MGV, that allows time for parents to come online, get their UPK student and then be either be at home at time or get on a rider line pickup for their Parliament or DeLuca student who's getting out at 3:05. If we were to move this UPK to end at three, they overlap and a parent can't be getting their UPK child at three and still be available for their Parliament or DeLuca child who gets out at 3:05.
And they can't come in at 8:30 either because that's an issue the same way on the other.
Then it would be the other end.
Right, okay. Makes sense.
What do you guys think about?
I like option two. Did we move the start times back?
We did. We moved them back 10 minutes.
So they get home early.
Yeah.
So 9:15 for the later schools instead of 9:45. I think earliest schools are 8:45 instead of 8:55.
Yep. Anyone else?
I'm just, I was wondering, have we exhausted the possibility of it, of needing a stagger time? Like as if there's no other way other than for the school year upcoming, it's a necessity? As if we can't move forward without it? Or is this in projection of that we might be understaffed with busing?
This is based on how many drivers we currently have and needing five runs from an outside source at a cost of $500,000.
So then we've exhausted the possibility of needing, of not needing a stagger time? So this is more so preventative with moving forward with the numbers that we have presently then?
Correct.
What is the probability or chance that we will be able to gauge more drivers?
So if we are able to engage five additional drivers more than we currently have, then we would be able to, um, save the money on the outside runs and run it in-house.
So there's still a possibility?
Yes.
We won't need a stagger time?
There is a possibility.
Yes.
Yes.
So then.
So this would be the plan, should we need to, out of a sheer necessity. The idea was to get the information out early because that's needed now. Should we put a date on it? So like you could, you could say, all right, this is our plan, should we need it and we're going to inform the community on this date as a definite date.
If we need to. So it's still fluid. Okay.
Yes, you can do that.
All right.
Because our contract with the bus company, we can tell them how many runs we need. I would, I would need to know if there's an exact date with them, but, you know, um, we have a contract with them already.
Okay. So then the conversation would be if this, if we have to come up with a plan B?
Yep.
Then these are the two options that?
Yes.
We would have to decide on.
Yep. If we can't maintain what we do now, then these would be the two options.
Can I ask a question with that option two? Um, is it possible for MGV to have the later start? But the pre-K, instead of starting 30 minutes earlier to, to start, you know, uh, 15 minutes earlier? Or 20 minutes earlier than it was in the original program?
I see 15 now. 9:15 and 9:00.
No, no, no. I'm looking at the, um, the, the handout that you had given to us last time at the meeting.
Right.
It looked like there was like a 25 minute lag, so instead of starting at 25 minutes earlier, is it possible to start at 25 minutes after?
And they would have to go longer too.
Right, no, I understand that.
I would bring it, the end time to.
2:55.
2:55, which is the three o'clock dismissal window of.
Parliament and.
Of Parliament and DeLuca. So you run into the problem of, the idea is trying to wedge it in the middle here about arrival and dismissal. By moving it later, you, um, are able to avoid the arrival conflict, but you still hit the dismissal conflict with UPK being 2:55 and then DeLuca and Parliament at 3:05. It would be difficult because every UPK kid has to be picked up.
Okay, wait, the, this, this, just the, the dismissal time for Parliament, you're saying is going to be 3:05?
If they are, if that, they're the early school year.
Right.
It's that option two. And then if you move the UPK 25 minutes, it would be 9:25 to 2:55. So you're hitting 2:55 and 3:05. And depending on where you are on the line and the dismissal and the number of kids, would you be able to get back to if you had to pick up a child at one of those schools?
I was just wondering, and again, we just got this tonight, but just tweaking like maybe Parliament will start at 8:45 and get out at, you know, three, um, 8:55 and get out at 3:15. Just kind of tweaking the numbers where, um, it would all fit in and ideally the pre-K students.
But if you make them later and you make them to 3:15, then it's too close to the Better Woods in Belmont at 3:35. Like you have to leave a certain amount of time because those buses are being repeated. So we're trying to keep the correct amount of time between the dismissals for runs to be repeated if need be. We use that both dismissals and UPK fit in the middle. So we ran a bunch of, you know, like that's how we found those other 10 minutes to try to make it earlier so that the late school wasn't getting out as late as it was.
Right.
And then still having enough time in between for the routes to be done if they needed to be repeated.
And we could have a situation where we have a family who has a UPK kid, a kid at MGV and also a kid at Parliament or DeLuca, right?
Yes, that's a possibility.
Because of dual language program, special education. So that, that's the, and I think one of the, um, I think the person who's here today who said that they had a situation like that. So, so that's, that's the difficulty is to make sure it's, it's, it's all available.
And with those situations regarding multiple buildings, we can look and work individually with families to see if we can place within maybe two buildings. Some of the services, like a DeLuca service, if it's a service for a child with special needs, we wouldn't be able to offer in MGV, but if there was a spot for a gen ed kid and the UPK kid, like if, if there were three buildings.
But like you said, we could have a kid in the language program, a kid in UPK and a kid in.
And remember, so dual languages, it's going to happen, right?
Yeah, that's going to happen, no matter, no matter what.
No matter what.
So maybe come out with, there's going to be outliers.
I think the idea of Keisha saying like, these are our best alternatives if we can't work out getting everyone the same start and end time.
Yeah.
And set a date to say, all right, we'll discuss this again. Maybe you guys take this sheet, brainstorm some, write down some numbers, send some questions. We can look at it again.
I, I, I'm not sure if the board can, um, maybe give their opinions of, are we looking to do the late start with MGV Woods and Belmont? Or are we looking to do the late start with Parliament and William DeLuca? I know that I had said, whatever scenario we work out, I would be in favor of the later start for MGV Woods Road in Belmont because I think there needs to be some equity. Those parents had to make arrangements.
Yeah, so that's option two. That's what we.
Right, well, I'm, so you said to take a look at this and ask any questions, but what I'm leaning, and I will, I'll look at this and definitely come up with some questions. But as of now, that's what I'm leaning toward. And I think parents here may want to know in what direction the board is, is feeling that they may go, knowing that the specifics aren't set in stone.
Yeah, you could determine early, late and then hours at a later date. If you want to give an indication of what option you're going towards and if there's minutes that we can look at. We kind of went through this kind of together, Frank, you get the principals and myself, like minute by minute, calculating the time, the time between the routes, how many routes, enough time to drop off, pick up. So we kind of brainstormed as much as we could. Carrie, have something to add?
The only thing I will add is because we do have wonderful staff of paraprofessionals in the building and teachers and staff that are part of the MBTO that are impacted by the decision because it has to do with their hours in each building.
Yeah, we have.
And if they have children in another building.
That's.
Because I know I was asked that question in particular, someone who's working in the UPK as to where their children's hours would be compared to what their work hours.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for that point, Ms. Lark.
Yeah. They have their own families too. Why, you looked at two options, but why didn't you look at the option of MGV starting earlier because it has to be UPK with the two schools that started late last year going early?
So when we evaluate the number of buses we need for each run, Parliament and DeLuca kind of equate to the other three buildings and it makes it an equitable amount of runs that Al can run at one time in each zone. So we can't really change the DeLuca-Parliament connection. So that's kind of a mainstay. Because we did explore, because Carrie asked the same thing, can I be moved to either spot? And we can't when evaluating and speaking to Al, he can't take a third building onto Parliament and DeLuca. Any board questions? Anyone on that?
I liked option two myself. Um, if anyone else wants to say what they like better.
I was just going to say, um, I think everyone ultimately would like no stagger times.
Yeah.
Right? That's the utopia here. However, um, just personally, if we had to choose, then I would lean towards, um, option two as well. Just as far as creating a balance, um, I think it's only fair.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't skin in the game like the rest of us, though. Um, I, I, I hear the point that Parliament and DeLuca went late during COVID. So maybe the other schools can go late. Um, you know, the, the other three schools have a hundred and some odd more kids, students than, than Parliament and DeLuca. So you're factoring a few more kids, but, uh, in the end, you know, we need to make a choice. And if that's Parliament and, um, DeLuca going early and, and maybe it puts Belmont going late now. So I think we.
It's not as late.
No, and it's, and it's not as late as the original discussion. So that would, that would be, so that's 10 minutes early, so. And that changes because we could have more than 20 on the bus from where we started and, right, a few more routes in the hybrid.
Yeah. We all good here? Because I know we're going to have some questions. Either way, there's going to be a set of parents, you know, families that are not particularly enthusiastic about the decision.
Well, that's nothing new.
All right. So big fan of option two very good. Um, I, when I broke this to you guys, because I asked you, part of, part of the conversation evolved into bus drivers and the idea of bringing more drivers in. Well, after that meeting, I was actually contacted by quite a number of bus drivers in North Babylon. I don't know how they found me, but they did. And what they made me understand is that it's not just getting more drivers, it's keeping the ones that have. So when Northwest Babylon finalizes their contract with our drivers and our drivers interview over there because they're offering more money and benefits, how are we going to respond in terms of transmitting our, our kids to school, contracting out? What, what's the plan?
As we said, I believe in the past, there's been some conversations with those unions involved. It's a little bit bigger because it's not, it's not just one little unit that's the bus drivers, there's a bunch of others. So there's big conversations with council about, again, making adaptations to a contract, whether, again, correct me if I'm wrong, right? That's, speaking correctly, right? To, right?
Yeah, so what we can really say is that we are involved in negotiations and that's all we can say.
So we have, we do sort of have a plan.
But then we would have to be contracting out more routes to these companies, correct?
Not if we hired more bus drivers.
So I'm seeing, let's see, like, but that's, I think that that's the other big question on the table is the staggered start.
So you're saying we have like
Depends upon the number of drivers, which can't be discussed, I totally get that. So are we financially able to contract out five more routes at the amount that you quoted at the last meeting?
So we had a big uptick and that's part of what happened this year, right? We, we did have an uptick.
But every contracted bus route, we save about $100,000, I think it is?
Well, we save about $65,000, but it's $100,000 a route.
Right, a route we save.
So we only contract out more routes than those $100,000 a route?
Yeah, and Karen, at a meeting, I think the board collectively said, when the bus drivers are there, we hear you. We want you to be, we want to be competitive.
We can't talk about that.
Right, no, I'm just saying, just understand, I, I think, um, people think that maybe we don't want to, we do, we want to be able to pay them.
No, I'm thinking from a financial aspect though, as a taxpayer, how much more money is it gonna cost us to transit? That's, that's what I'm asking, that's like, that's the bottom line question is, how much is it gonna cost to contract out more? So I'm talking dollars.
Six, about $65,000 a route.
And do we have that in the budget to be
We're always building contingency funds for emergencies.
That's like why when we went into COVID, we needed more buses to get the kids here, it cost us a bit more, we had to contract more out as well.
Thank you.
Just, I think you gotta go off what Karen was saying. Right now, we're, we're down five drivers. We had to contract out two outside companies. Is that down? So it's, it's not gonna be lost five drivers, it's that this saves us, uh, the entire contract will up a lot, so this saves five drivers, so it's, it's more of a savings than, and that's all budgeted for in '22, '23 is the current situation. But combining the, uh, splitting up the elementary schools allows us to save five routes, which costs us the cost of the entire contract going up. That's where the five routes go in. It's not that we just, it's not that we lost five program managers this year. The entire contract costs went up by a lot. So we have to save, save money unless you want more and more of the budget going toward transportation, so that's
But you were saying, I believe earlier, that for us to get the right number or for us to get out of that contract, we need to hire five more drivers on our, our own contract that we currently have with our own fleet.
I guess what I was asking is if we had five more drivers, could we stay?
If we were able to increase the number of drivers that we have on our fleet, we would be able to reduce some of our contractual costs.
The reason I'm asking is right now, we're, we're talking about a staggered start to, because we are lacking in manpower as far as for this, for the calendar year moving forward.
Well, let me just reframe that, just so you know what I'm saying. So the manpower is the same. The cost of the routes we currently contract right now went up significantly. So that's the difference, we're not, we don't have less people, we're budgeting the same people. The problem is that the cost of the contracted runs that we have went up. We already have those runs right now, operating in our district, they're just doing different things right now. They're doing late bus runs or other runs. So the cost went up for those routes, which is why, in order to reduce that, we had to offset by reduce, by changing the routing and the number of routes we have in each time, else we would need more routes and it would be a bigger increase.
And that's how we came up with the staggered start for the next year. So how do we prevent the staggered start from becoming a permanent thing moving forward from one year to the next? But right now, we're talking about the next calendar year. But if things did not change monetarily speaking in our budget for the routes, then this discussion becomes a permanent discussion of the staggered start.
So what, what happened is this is the biggest budget to budget jump that you'll see from, because it's a new contract. So now, next year, budget to budget, we could look at our tax cap money, how much money we have able in our cap to start flattening that curve because it'll be a budget to budget change, which is significantly less from last year's contract number to this year's. So that number will be more flat. So we would be able to, when we formulate next year's budget, see where we can change other things since that's not going up so drastically.
But this still doesn't guarantee the prevention of the staggered start. That's just saying that you guys will be able to reevaluate next year.
Correct.
To see if you're able to
But we do that across all programs and all services in the district, they're evaluated each year. With the goal of always, as mentioned here, having a single start time for all kids in the district, that's always our goal.
How long is that contract for?
Frank, do you know the duration of the contract?
It's a five-year contract, um, so this one's your one, so there's four years left on the contract.
Is there a fair amount of increases on that contract?
Uh, it'll, it'll up in CPI, um, so
So that's a point of concern as well, because you said we anticipated 20% increase for this contract and actually increased by 72% based on the numbers you gave us last meeting. That's a 72% increase, a step-up increase annually for the next 40 years. Isn't it more economical and not impacting to the community? In short, most drivers now at a premium rate, as most of, media, 72% increase. Anticipated 3% increases hereover, you're looking at additional 50% over that 72.
Yeah, that's exactly what we said. That's what we said we're trying to do.
Yeah, I, I think the emphasis on that needs to be because we're talking about impact on the whole community.
Well, there's a huge emphasis on it. It's a, it's again, it's a contract, so therefore we're in the middle of trying to figure out how to, that contract sales went. So it really is not out until next year. Right, we're doing it early for this purpose and we are in current negotiations that we are not permitted to speak about. So it may not seem as robust or as exaggerated as it feels to you because that's, we can't speak about negotiations in public.
No, I, I understand that.
But working on what you're saying is, is exactly right.
My point is that in, one, we're saying we negotiate, there's a 50% increase or a 50% delta over what we anticipated the increase to be, that's really not negotiating. So, uh, so that's great, I'm curious, how was that signed?
How's that what? I didn't hear you.
How was that signed? How was that agreement signed? Who voted on that?
The Board of Education voted and signed it.
And I thought the contract did go out, uh, through, through a process that's all transportation companies. It's just, you take the best alternative, right? So if, if that one wasn't the best option, there was no better alternative. It's not that we didn't, not that we didn't just go with one contract, we, we might have to bid on the contract. We evaluated everything, it's just, that was the cheapest alternative and such a drastic increase because of COVID and because the existing contract we had, it's so updated, it's been rolled for a very long time and it was ended very close. So that's why you saw such a big increase in budget.
And also, you know, there, the amount of bus companies is narrowing on Long Island and the amount of usage. So last year was a huge problem for many school districts. In the beginning of the school year, William Floyd had an issue, they didn't budget correctly for their, they weren't sure they were gonna be able to do their fleet. And during the year, Huntington had their contract, they're looking to pull out of their contract. And the bus companies kind of merged, similar to like textbook companies do. We go out for an RFP, we estimated what we thought would be, um, the increase, it came in much more. And then we have to adjust our budget and our expenditures based on that. And
What is the five-year value of that contract?
Excuse me?
What is the five-year value of the contract?
I think there's about 20, I think it's about $20 million. It's about $20 million.
That's, I'm going to think that we couldn't afford even spending $5 billion on staff and on our own staff.
But that's, that's exactly what we're saying. We can't tell you what we are negotiating. So when you keep saying about the amount of money you're negotiating or giving money and trying to increase our fleet, I think the board has said that that is exactly what we are trying to do.
We're trying to do that math, that I, I'm just asking you, where did you start?
During COVID and the inflation and the changing of the contract that happened to us quickly in many districts as well as us. Happened over the summer. That's when that happened and like Mr. Lucetti said, that unit is one of six bargaining units in one contract. They really don't have the ability to have, um, separate negotiations, but the Teamsters are allowing them to have conversation with the district regarding negotiations for that subunit in that Teamsters unit. Cause in that contract, our custodians, um, groundskeepers, maintenance mechanics, bus drivers, they're all in one unit. So when the board negotiates with that unit, they negotiate, um, all aspects of that contract that affect all of those members. So right now, we're looking at one particular group within that contract. Thank you.
At the last meeting, I could be wrong, I was very late to the meeting. I know you can take five, but I thought they said there was three drivers. Two were retiring and one was a equalizer, better opportunity, so isn't that eight? Routes, am I wrong on that?
So it could be, but I have to tell you that every day that number changes. So if you speak to a bus driver, one particular day, they heard five are leaving, then we heard, then that, nobody has put in any papers to leave. So the hard part is that we're trying to, we budgeted for how many current drivers we have. Because we have no knowledge that anybody is leaving or any specific paperwork regarding specific retirement or leave. So we took that number and we're saying, based on that number, we made a budget. If that number gets reduced before we can increase it, then yes, it would require more. So just this scenario, you're saying if three were to go, then in order to hit that sweet spot, we would need eight. Yes, so you are correct with that. But that's a moving target because we never know, um, what that number would be until we come to the start of the school year.
Okay, in my, in my opinion, it's not necessarily about buses, it's about our problem with parents, so this year we weren't affected. Two years later, we'll play together. So if this year you guys choose to keep Portland earlier, because preschools are affected, what next year, is this gonna be a conversation again next year where it's gonna be our, you know, maybe you have problems again? Like, is it gonna be like flip-flop of time, because that's what we need to know? Cause if it was me, you guys do Portland again, I'd just hour it next day. I mean, it's a work, by the time I have to go in. So
So typically what, no, sorry.
Parents, they can't keep doing this, they can't keep flip-flopping, you know, their schedules and the, the money and things today. You know, I understand this situation, I understand that you guys are having issues, hiring or whatever this is going on with buses, but it can't be all the time, you know, we can't constantly be changing everything. Like, three, one year is three schools, next year is two schools, it can't be
So typically, if a district has to stay with a plan of staggered starts, they typically come out with a plan, if this is our situation moving forward, I would recommend to the board a multi-year plan. And in my experiences, both as a parent and as a leader in and of the district, they typically rotate on two-year plans. So my children, when they went to the Smithtown School District, there were nine elementary schools. Five were early, four were late, and you stayed that way for two years. And then you changed the next two years, and then you changed the next two years. And that's a common practice where if we are going to find ourselves in that predicament, that would be a conversation that the board, we could develop a multi-year plan moving forward so that people would know moving forward, what the district's plan would be.
That's kind of what I was gonna ask, I think it's a consideration, I think it's not, you know, every year we can't be changing, you know, our jobs and take this year after this.
Right, every year is very difficult, it would be some, some other type of plan where it's some consistency. Kids are in elementary school for six years, so even if this district decided to do three and then three, you know, to make it equitable, those are conversations we can have in the future, but haven't had yet.
I think the goal is to try and keep it everyone at the same time. That would be the, I think that's the goal, right?
And if we don't get that for next year, maybe during the school year, we work towards that for the following year. Anyone else?
Oh, can I ask any questions? Okay.
Yeah, a second. Hey, Jennifer. Hi, Jennifer, Sally Mitchell. I'm gonna go back to, I will go back to the post there in a moment. The reports that the teachers were giving on the, um, the staff ending out to prevent violence, have they given you updates on that?
So at our last regular education board meeting, we had an update. I'm trying to think of what meeting it was at, but, um,
It was a while ago.
Yeah, so, um, at this time, we haven't had any formal updates to the board from that. We've been supervising the plans, working with the middle school and high school principal and implementing those plans.
So you don't know if they're still being followed or, I'm just
Oh, they are.
They are being followed, are they working?
Yes. We have significantly less violent episodes than we had when we were discussing those plans and implementing those plans.
And then, and I do agree with what everyone else has said from the community about the busing situation. Obviously, $60,000 being spent on an outsourced, we're losing, you know, losing $60,000 on an outsourced route. I understand that not all of our routes can be bused with our drivers because we do provide services to private schools and it's just not financially feasible or responsible for us to take on those routes. I do understand that. Obviously, I looked over the contract that the, um, the bus drivers have and they are lumped in with the mechanics and janitors and everybody like that, so I do understand that, but I just want you to take into consideration that the community is talking to you about this because we want, we want the people that work and take our kids to and from school to want to work in our district. When I was a kid growing up in North Babylon, there used to be a waitlist to be a bus driver here because we had such a good service. Okay, and we never had stability. Our, our name never showed up on that scroll on the bottom because we had our own buses. And I think that that's something that, that we should provide as much as we can. So obviously, we can't compete with districts out east that are state-run in the bigger districts. We can't compete with those financially, but we can compete with West Babylon and Deer Park that are right next door because we already lose drivers and what is the contingency plan if we lose five more drivers compared to what we are losing now? Are we gonna have to have multiple staggered starts?
We're absolutely listening and your kids will get to school one way or another. Um, and, and we're gonna try and get them all there at one time, so we're, we're letting, we're listening.
I know, I, I know, and I just see you guys shaking your heads in agreement with us, I, I understand. And I know you can't talk about contract negotiations when they're in a contract. And I actually applaud you for that because that would be something that we should just but if we do continue to lose drivers, are, is our thought to outsource those routes? Or is it to stagger more, more schools? Or, you know, are we getting to the point where we're just gonna say, let's sell them for a month? I, like, what kind of progress are, where, where are we looking?
I don't think we're at that point yet to have those type of discussions. But again, we're gonna get the kids to school, just like during COVID, it cost us an extremely higher amount of money than planned and we had to make it work, right? We, we're gonna get the kids to school, we're gonna do the best job possible to get them all there at the same time. So, thank you. So, thank you.
I have one more question, if you could tell me else. I like tonight, when we weren't allowed in there, when they were doing the results. I've been coming here for.
So I just, I don't wanna cut you off, and I, I know you, you had mentioned it to me, but that has absolutely zero to do with us. That's, that was the election, that's what she called, she, she asked us to stay out, right? And we don't get invited, I'm not directing myself into that election. And I agree, and I agree that we have been in there in the past for as many years as I've been around.
Thirty, thirty, twelve years.
So, so all I can say, what I can do as the, as president of the board is to speak with Veronica, who's the district clerk, and, and maybe find out why that happened. But this is, Evelyn, you would have just been in there socializing. They didn't do anything other, they counted the votes.
It's not, but we were, we're always in there, we're always, we're always ready to that.
But we still allowed everyone in when the important parts happened.
I just didn't understand what the difference was, and I didn't like it.
Understood.
I'm just.
Thank you for telling me.
I'm not, I'm just leaving it up.
We weren't allowed in, no. Thank you.
It's not always that important, okay?
Today, when I walked in, I asked the chief, is it okay for us to come in? And she said, can you wait, we just have to tabulate these machines. And I said, sure, no problem. And then we went in, when they were done, and they did the absentee ballots, and we did the.
Live.
And so there was just a loss of ten or fifteen minutes socializing in that room. And I'm sorry you didn't like it, but that's.
No, like, we're not socializing, we always, we've always watched.
I would say, watch what?
I can only, yes, we've always watched them.
Watch what?
Well, we used to go from building to building and, and watch them count the machines.
No, but what did you miss watching today?
Nothing, I, I, I know you think it's stupid, but I like to watch them count the machines. I can socialize and watch at the same time. I think it's fascinating.
Thank you.
What the hell, you're weird.
Anyone else? It's 11:30.
Is this your last meeting?
Uh, possibly, yes.
Well, then can I just say, cause I, again, I've been coming here a very long time. You've been awesome for the district, and I will miss you.
Thank you.
Just because maybe no one else in the room might know. But Gary Stefano, who has been our attorney as part of the firm for many, many years, I won't say how many, that's on him. But I do, we found out tonight that he is definitely stepping away and moving into his next section of his life. And I agree with you, Evelyn. Uh, thank you from the bottom of our heart for all the work you have done with our administration, with our Board of Education throughout the years, and enjoy your, you know, next endeavors.
Thank you, you have, you have a great.
I'm more than a charter, I'm willing to go.
Yes, you have a great group of board members here. Uh, I've been here since the early nineties, one building or another, and the firm has been here since the early nineties. No, I'll make it quick.
You can come back to another meeting.
Yeah, they have everybody's best interests at heart, and it's been my pleasure working with the group and administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. I need a motion to a adjournment.
Second, I can.